Good evening, or good afternoon I should say. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting for July 16th of the Midland Public School Board of Education. In the absence of our Secretary, Mr. Wasserman, would you call a roll?
Yes. Had to wait for my microphone to turn on, sorry. President Malt.
Here.
Vice President Wasserman. President, Secretary Baker is absent due to illness, family illness. Treasurer Ollie?
Here.
Member Branstad?
Here.
Member Gordon?
Here.
And Member Kaminsky is absent, but we do have a call.
Thank you. Before we proceed to the consent agenda, just want to bring one note. 2.7 on the MHSAA Administration recommends approval for the Michigan High School Athletic Association, that is not our normal resolution. That is for the middle school piece that's coming, that we have discussed and talked about in previous board meetings, and so that is consent only. So with that, if there's anything else that anybody saw on the consent agenda, you've had it for a few days? If not, we'll move forward. 2.1 is the meeting minutes from June 25th. 2.2 is the adoption of the Michigan Code of Articles, Schools of Choice. 2.3 is the following textbooks that are presented for 28-day period. 2.4 are the bids for the custodial supply vendors to provide FX hard-wound hand towels to district facilities. 2.5 is the second phase of the project to place wireless services across the entire district. 2.6 is the approval to request for purchase of second phase of Cisco hardware. 2.7 is administrative, administration recommends board approval for the middle school piece. And 2.8 is the October 9, 2000 Middle Public Schools joint other districts in a lawsuit against the state of Michigan. And if I'm correct, it is the Durant judgment. But anyway, those are our consent agendas for this afternoon. Does anybody have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of consent items 2.1 through 2.8.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ollie, supported by Angela Branstad. And those in favor?
Hold on, I have to read the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. We can just point it later in the agenda.
There's two, there's a resolution for each. I would just point out, this is a lot of agenda items for the consent, so really if there's anything there you want to discuss, I think we're prepared to talk to you about that, but if not, I think you all knew they were coming, and some of them we'd even addressed at previous board meetings, so.
Does the, does the resolution for the middle school need to be read?
Yes.
Prior to voting on that, that was my point.
Read aloud.
Do that right now?
Yeah.
That's fine. If you would, Mr. Wasserman.
So item 2.7's resolution reads as following. Reserve Jefferson Middle School, or resolved, I'm sorry. Resolved Jefferson Middle School, Central Middle School, Northeast Middle School, and Bullet Creek Middle School agrees to join together to fund, support, and maintain a cooperative team in boys' cross-country and girls' cross-country. The primary school, Central Middle School, effective August 27, 2012. The respective boards of education must submit the advanced preparation material included within this resolution to the MHSAA for approval. The Cooperative Program Board of Control will be at Jefferson Middle School, Mike Decker, Administrator, and Carlos McGee, Athletic Director; at Central Middle School, Steve Poole, Administrator, and Carlos McGee, Athletic Director; and at Northeast Middle School, Jeff Jaster, Administrator, Carlos McGee, Athletic Director. We, under sign, agree to the conditions and content of this resolution, and will work cooperatively for the success of the program and benefit of our children.
Okay, with that, we need a roll call vote on that, Carl, or?
Roll call vote on resolutions.
Okay. So am I, we just doing a roll call on 2.7, or the whole?
So I'll have to take that on my motion approval consent items. Because that's obviously included in that.
7.7. And then I'll move support of 2.7. If someone will, will second 2.7, since we're going to pull it out, Rick. Mr. Ollie? Okay. Roll call vote on 2.7's approval. President Malt?
Yes.
Vice President Wasserman, yes. Secretary Baker absent, Treasurer Ollie?
Yes.
Member Branstad?
Yes.
Member Gordon?
Yes.
Member Kaminsky is absent, it passes 5-0.
With that, I'll entertain, or go back to the original motion that's on the table and been supported on the consent agenda. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And thank you. Thanks for bringing that up, bringing me up to speed on that. Thanks, Gary. So Board of Education presentations to the board, or I'm sorry, requested here from the audience, and I don't see, other than they're probably coming in here for a cooling station, it doesn't look like anybody wants to come to the podium, so I'm sure they will in a moment. With that, we'll close, request to address the board, and move on to the Board of Education Matters, which is the 4.1 Michigan, or Proposed Michigan Association School Board Delegate and Alternate.
You can just see that for the 11-12 school year, Dr. Kaminsky was your delegate, and Mrs. Baker was the alternate. We've had contact with both, and I believe they're willing to continue in another year if you would like them to do that. This is a little different than the designations for all of you as board members that we do at the organizational meeting in January, where you serve on different committees and act as representatives to the ESA and so on. And the reason for that is that the MASB still operates their organization on the old timeline for a school year that starts July 1 and ends June 30. So this will be an item that will add every July in the future.
So with that, does anybody have an interest, other than the two that have been last year's designate, designees? And I don't think so, so we'll just.
They're not here, so they should do it.
It does appear that way, doesn't it?
That was convenience.
By default. I like that as well. I like that.
I move for 4.1.
Second.
Moved by Mr.?
If in your movement, if you would make the nomination of those two individuals.
I'm sorry, I move to support Dr. Kaminsky as delegate and Lynn Baker's alternate to the MASB for the 2012-13 school year.
And I second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and supported for Dr. Kaminsky and Lynn Baker as to the Michigan Association of School Boards Delegate and Alternate. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We have those two down by default. So having moved earlier on the middle school piece with the Michigan High School Athletic Association, we have another resolution with respect to 4.2. Mr. Ellinger.
And again, for the same reason, because this resolution allows our school district to participate in the Michigan High School Athletic Association in adopting their rules and regulations, and most importantly, it allows us to participate in their tournament action for those sports that have tournaments at the end of the season. So the Michigan Attorney General ruled in 1977 that the Michigan High School Athletic Association, hereby is known as MHSAA, is a private organization, and therefore cannot be delegated governmental authority to regulate public school athletics. That may surprise a lot of people in our viewing audience. However, a school district may join the association and may adopt the association's rules as its own. The school district must then accept the responsibility to enforce these rules on the district. Obviously, we do that via our athletic directors and our coaches. And the middle and secondary schools have been longstanding members of the MHSAA. A copy of the minutes of the May 2012 meeting of the Representative Council of MHSAA, which provides information on athletic changes for the 12-13 school year, has been provided for the Board of Education. Administration recommends that the Board, 1, approve membership in the MHSAA for the five middle school secondary schools again in 12-13; 2, adopt the rules of the MHSAA as published in its current handbook and qualifications as published in the bulletin with above changes to govern athletic competitions at MPS for the 2012-13 year; and 3, accept the responsibility for enforcing these rules for Midland Public Schools. We have a formal resolution embodying these recommendations. The resolution is to be read aloud, a roll call vote of the Board taken, and the Board's secretary or other officer, if in their absence, is authorized to sign the resolution if approved.
Someone?
Support. Moved by Mr. Ollie, supported by Mr. Wasserman. Mr. Wasserman, if you'd be so kind.
Membership resolution for the year August 1, 2012, through July 31, 2013. Herbert Henry Dow High School, Midland High School, Central Middle School, Jefferson Middle School, and Northeast Middle School, the secondary schools which are under the direction of this Board of Education and governing body of Midland City of Midland, County of Midland, of the state of Michigan, are hereby, A, enrolled as members of the Michigan High School Athletic Association, a nonprofit association, and B, are further enrolled to participate in the approved inter-school athletic activities sponsored by said association. The Board of Education Governor, governing body hereby delegates to the superintendent or his/her designees the responsibility for the supervision and control of said activities, and hereby accepts the constitution and bylaws of said association and adopts as its own rules, regulations, and interpretations as minimum standards, as published in the current handbook, as a governing code under which the said school shall conduct its program of interscholastic athletics, and agrees to primary enforcement of said rules, regulations, interpretations, and qualifications. In addition, it is hereby agreed that schools which host or participate in the association's meets and tournaments shall follow and enforce all tournament policies, procedures, and schedules. This authorization shall be effective from August 1, 2012, and shall remain effective until July 31, 2013, during which the authorization may not be revoked.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote, thank you. We'll begin the roll call vote. President Malt?
Yes.
Vice President Wasserman, yes. Secretary Baker absent, Treasurer Ollie?
Yes.
Member Branstad?
Yes.
Member Gordon?
Yes.
Member Kaminsky is absent, the resolution passes 5-0.
Thank you. And on to 4.3, which is an administrative appointment. Mr. Ellinger.
Well, why don't we have Mr. DeBoer come up and join us at the podium? Why, it's my pleasure to recommend to the Board this appointment to an administrative position. I recommend to you the appointment of Dirk DeBoer as the Assistant Principal Level 2 at HH Dow High School. This position was vacated recently by the appointment of Ted Davis as the Assistant Principal Level 1 at Dow High. Mr. DeBoer graduated from Saginaw Valley State University in 1995 with a Bachelor of Arts degree. He majored in psychology and minored in sociology. In August of 2002, he earned his Masters and Specialist degrees in school psychology from Central Michigan University. Previously, Mr. DeBoer worked for the Tuscola Intermediate School District. He joined the Midland Public Schools Special Services Team as a school psychologist in September of 2003. He has served Dow High, Longview, Woodcrest, Chipewassee, Mills, and Carpenter over the course of his career with MPS. As an ICT facilitator at Woodcrest and a myblissey behavior coach at Mills, Dirk has led the staff in their school improvement efforts and provided one-on-one instructional, instructional advice to various teachers. Mr. DeBoer, DeBoer has also served as an assistant football coach at HH Dow High School. Due to his record of data-driven decision-making, proving, proven leadership skills, which many of you have seen in the curriculum study committees that you've served on over the years, and strong work ethic, the Administrative Personnel Committee and the Agenda Group have unanimously recommended that Mr. DeBoer be appointed the next Assistant Principal Level 2 at Dow High School. If the Board concurs, his appointment will be effective immediately.
It was a pleasure.
We don't need to vote on it, though. This is yours.
No, you need to vote on it.
Oh, do we? Just for information. I'll move approval.
That's what I said.
We don't want to vote for him. I'll vote for him.
Support. Okay, we have, it's moved and supported, but Mr. Ollie, Mr. Wasserman, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We should have had him do the speech first, before we vote.
Certainly take this opportunity to make some remarks.
I really appreciate that. I just want to extend thanks on behalf of my wife, Melissa, my two daughters, Dalton and Delaney, and myself, for the opportunity from, from the interview committee and obviously all the major stakeholders and decision-makers of the district, to be able to work at Dow High in a new capacity. I have a tremendous amount of respect for that building. I've been able to serve as a school psychologist in two different stints in the last nine years. Already know there's an excellent teaching staff, paraprofessional staff, and a great administrative team. They're all a great learning, learning opportunity for myself, and to work with such, in such a fine environment. So I really appreciate, really appreciate the opportunity from everybody, and I'm ready to get to work, so thanks a lot.
Don't go away.
Okay.
Comments, comments from the Board?
Well, thanks for taking on the challenge, first of all. It's a great addition to Dow High.
Thanks.
I gotta believe having a psychology background is really useful, working with all the rest of the administrators, I'm just saying.
Exactly.
Good luck to you, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And I'll finish, maybe finish this if nobody else. Dirk, I've had the experience of having you work with my young daughter on a couple of, of just not seemingly very difficult situations, but it, you were immensely important to that process, and it proved to be very successful, and she's experienced, or her experience with you and your lovely wife in the classroom has been something that she still talks about to this day. And so it's, it's very, I think, satisfying as a board member, and as, and I'm sure that others would feel the same up here, to see that somebody of your caliber from within our ranks has, has a willingness to step up and meet a new challenge, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Definitely a pleasure working with her, and it's always a two-way street when a kid works that hard, that makes my job a lot easier, so, yeah. And there's a lot of them at Dow High like that, so that's why it's a, it's a great place to be. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thanks, too, to our staff members that showed up to support him. You know, I think only one was there because she had to be, so.
She had to be? Really?
I think the other one's here to make sure somebody replaced him.
If you put a coat and tie on it, it's very impressive.
He didn't get the memo. Didn't get the memo, so it's all good. Okay, with that, on to finance, and we have no FFO reports, so Mrs. Klein.
Yes, and ordinarily, legal bills would appear on the consent agenda for approval, but because of the end of the fiscal year and our audit coming up, we had some bills that we always call the law firms at the very end of June, need to get the final bills, and they have to be paid. We can't wait until we get to this meeting. So for information only, you'll see that we paid two bills, one to Seacrest Wardle, that is the law firm handling the Durant or the Dare legislation these days, and then a final bill to Truen Law Firm. Then we have also received gifts totaling $3,390, and these are for information as well, because none of them exceed individually $5,000. We have a gift from the Dow Chemical Community Gives Fund, and I believe that is at the Midland Area Community Foundation, that's for the Northeast Volleyball Club. We have a gift from Atsushi and Hiroko Tishima, and that's for the Dow High Cool Campus Club. The Dow Corning Donor Advised Endowment Fund at Midland Area Community Foundation, which is for supporting Eastland students to attend the SMEC Plus, which camp at Saginaw Valley. SMEC stands for Science and Mathematics Extravaganza for Kids. That's why we abbreviated it. And then we had an anonymous gift for the Dow High Band Club. So we're already on our way, over $3,000 in gifts for the 12-13 school year, which has not even begun.
That's good, very good. Thank you. Moving on to human resources, Mr. Berlindi.
Yes, we have one memorial. The Board and the staff extend their deepest sympathy to the family of Mrs. Julia Yonkers, who passed away on June 30, 2012. She taught first grade at Seabert and Longview, retiring in 1986. Our sympathies to the family.
Thank you. And with that, we have, you all have in your packets the correspondence to inform the Board of Education, and our scheduled activities for the remainder of 2012, which carries us to our last meeting on December 12, or sorry, December 10, 2012. And with that, we have study discussions, and I know everybody's been busy, so I was glad that we're all together at least once this month, so then we'll start with Mr. Ollie.
I just want to congratulate Dirk again. I said, I know you're going to be highly successful because you picked the shortest meeting of the year to come to and be approved, so we wish you good luck. Yeah, that's all I have.
Well, I'd like to send as a, as from my personally, my position here on the Board, personal condolences to the Weckertser family on the loss of young Ms. Weckertser in that tragic accident, and just wanted to make that statement publicly. It's never a good thing when one of our students has a tragedy of that nature, so we're in the middle of July, and everybody is trying to stay cool, and I think that from what Carl and the administrative team has shared with me, we're right on course with respect to what we're doing in our buildings, and looking forward to the fall. And I think for those of you, August, Carl has a date for those of you who want to join us for opening day. I know that's seemingly putting the cart before the horse, but we, that will get here sooner than we expect, so with that, Gary?
Well, I broke the rules and left my phone open, and I hope it's not staticking everything up, and usually you can hear it, and I have not heard it, so that's good. And Carl, don't, normally I would just discuss this offline, but since it just came, as I was driving in from MERS, just some breaking news out of Lansing that may be of interest to us, nothing to act on. I'll just go ahead and read this MERS press release, because it'll be of interest to the Board. Richard McClellan, a former advisor to Governor John Engler, has been tapped by the current Republican governor to head a School Aid Act rewrite, a move designed to give families more flexibility sending schools, kids to the school district they wish to attend. Governor Snyder wants to give the state aid to students and not the school districts, but McClellan said this is not a voucher system. Anticipating the criticism, McClellan said, quote, "You know, that's a radioactive term. I don't intend to use it. I don't think the governor intends to use it. It's not part of the discussion," unquote. What will be part of the discussion, he said, is writing more flexibility for families into the 30-year-old School Aid Act so they can go to any school at any time, any way, as he puts it. While the education lobby may want to talk about pumping more dollars into the School Aid Act, McClellan said that is not on his agenda. Quote, "This is more about how you slice the pie than the size of the pie," unquote. Doug Pratt at the Michigan Education Association has a different view. Quote, "Money needs to be on the table. We also have to have a real conversation on how the money that's there is allocated, but this is an opportunity to siphon money away into pet projects that only help a select few," question mark, unquote. McClellan will begin the process by inviting 80 different organizations for a public hearing on Tuesday, and he expects the rewrite to take from three to five months to allow the governor to include the recommendation in his new budget for next year. Snyder has been of the mentality that state aid should not be based on seat time, but on performance. That's what MERS reported just as we were coming into the meet, an hour before we came into the meeting. So things are gonna look like they're gonna brew, who knows where they're gonna go, who knows how they'll end up, who knows when they'll really end up, who knows what it will really look like, but obviously, the governor's taking the initiative to start drafting legislation that would change how schools are funded.
Can I just, I had a copy of that, I was gonna.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Carl.
Linda and I have talked about this. This really did, I think, take most school districts by surprise. They announced it publicly on 1/13 this afternoon, and for, for me, not necessarily for our district, but as superintendent of one school district, a large one in the state of Michigan, I have a little bit of concern about what this would mean. It's not a surprise to all of us that the governor, he has indicated prior to this announcement, that he would like to use this coming year as a way to go back and look at how public schools are funded. This is a little different twist in that it does smack a bit of the dollars can follow wherever the students go, and given that almost any school district now can create its, its own online charter school if it would choose to. This, I think, it's a good effort. I want to believe it's well-intentioned, but like most school districts, you wonder what it means for the foundation dollars that might follow students that would go elsewhere. We could be one of those students that could gain from it. You don't know if this will apply across the state, will there be boundaries, will it have some impact on the way school of choice is regulated, based on the action you all took in the consent agenda. I think we just take a wait-and-see attitude and see what it really means, and if it's gonna happen, we have to look for opportunity in that, and, and not get defensive about it, but really take a look at what it means, and right now, we don't know. It took me, and I think Linda, very much by surprise, to hear that there would be an announcement the day before they were going to invite 80 organizations in to give testimony. We became aware of some, actually something that Linda learned over the weekend, of a superintendent up north that got invited to be part of the planning process. And this has been, the fact that they're taking testimony tomorrow has been, I think, a pretty well-kept secret. That alone would cause me to wonder what's behind it and where it's being driven to, so we'll just watch it for you. And I'm sure MASB, your parent organization, will, will do the same thing.
But there is an inference that the concept of a foundation allowance necessarily would change, or who knows what the amount would do. That potentially could change, right?
Not the thing that I've read. Just that if you have a student go somewhere else, that the foundation would go with them.
Right.
I mean, we wouldn't get it anyway if they went somewhere else.
Right, right. Is it just difference, because if somebody from another district comes here, it's that foundation amount that comes to us, not the amount we normally get. Correct.
And, and some communities have chosen not to do school of choice like we have chosen.
But if one of our students goes somewhere else where they have a lesser foundation allowance, is the bigger amount doesn't either, so.
Today.
Smaller no matter what.
Well, it depends when they go.
If they go under schools of choice.
Right.
It's if they go under cooperative agreements.
Yeah, if they go under our published school of choice, then the foundation allowance follows them, our larger allowance.
The lower, she says.
Oh, no, pardon me, just the reverse.
So this isn't a rewriting of quote, proposal A, so when we say redo of state funding, this is not really, I'm not hearing that anyways.
No, but I think the two are related.
Yeah.
Stay tuned for the next episode.
That's right.
Who knows what the scope will be.
Yeah.
And I know a lot of districts that have not done school of choices we have chosen to do are more than a little bit nervous about this, because it's wondering if it's in fact we're gonna force them to do a school of choice of other people in the district when they have chosen not to do that.
Well, the school of choice is one of the best practices now, one of, I think, what, seven or eight that districts have to follow.
To get the money.
Well, they don't have to.
They don't have to, just for the money.
If they have to do six or five out of seven, I've forgotten what it is.
And some districts have.
Yes, some have and some haven't.
Are we assuming there's implication for local students here? We don't know.
But that's what no one knows.
Like I said, stay tuned. Angela, sorry to bounce around tonight, but.
That's all right, because I have so much to say. No, I guess one thing, I am really excited about this middle school, um, cross-country, because I do know that's one thing, you know, since I, well, I guess I don't have all middle schoolers anymore, but friends of ours that live in other parts of the state of Michigan, I know that that is a program that we've seen in the Christmas letters a lot at other middle schools, and so I'm glad that we will have something like that here.
Yvonne?
Well, I just wanted to offer my congratulations to Mr. DeBoer also, and I give you my best wishes on your new job, and that's really all I have to say. I feel like everything's been so fast today, I feel a little breathless, like I wonder that I, did I get everything?
Shortest, shortest meeting of the year, as Rick said.
We started out that way, I'm not sure we're.
Now, we're going back to Mr. Ellinger, as we've still part of his.
I'm glad you raised that issue, because I have a book here for all of you to read.
You know, we're gonna be at your house, Carl, whether or without you, so.
Before we, before we dismiss. Actually, I do have a book. It's a book called Schools Cannot Do It Alone, that I would like to encourage all of you to read sometime this summer. I'm asking Gary and Kathy and Linda to do the same thing, and I'm involved with a community group here in town of the mayor and some other significant leaders of organizations, where we're just exploring that if we had the best school system in the entire country, what would that look like? And I think this book allows you to understand a very interesting concept, and that is, the author is Jamie Vollmer, and some people will recognize him as educators, because he kind of floated the concept of, you know, what, blueberries and education, and he drew a parallel that when businesses get a raw product in the door, if that product is not a quality product, they won't use it, but they'll, they'll continue with their business functions. If you were building a car, you wouldn't buy bad steel, no matter where you were getting it, around the world, you just wouldn't do that. It's not an exact parallel, running schools and running businesses, in part because we educate all children when they walk in the door, and they all bring their own respective challenges, some more so than others, and we know how we intervene and educate them to the best of our abilities. This book talks about, though, if education were to fundamentally change, and I'll just throw some concepts, not saying that even I have an interest in it, but when you talk about fundamental change to education, our governors throw in a concept out there of anywhere, anytime, anyplace, kind of no restrictions. Another concept would be, you don't let education be defined by the traditional school year that it has in the past, but you look into what full year, full year school would look like. You know, some people will call it a 45-15 arrangement, where kids are in school for nine weeks, you take a week with the staff to shut that nine-week period down, you take a week off, there's no obligation for those teachers involved, you bring them back the third week, they prepare for the next nine weeks coming up, and there's other schedules, there are a number of schedules that can accommodate year-round schools. You take a look at the kind of rigor that we offer in curriculum, you look at what technology brings to the table. I read the book just in the last few weeks, and it really excited me again, because his point was sometimes what gets in the way of reforming education, or even embracing new ideas, is the very culture that a lot of our parents and our communities have about education. And a lot of times, that culture is driven by what we recall from our school experience. And this author goes into some detail on how we're often nostalgic about what our school experience was. He also talks about that sometimes that nostalgia brings amnesia with it. We forget what the challenges were, you know what, when we graduated in the '50s or the '60s or the '70s or later, whatever your decade would be. He combines those two terms and calls it nostasia, which I really like. And his point is that if Boards of Education and school districts really want to reach out to their communities, we have to do it in ways differently than we traditionally have, and we can't do it on our terms as educators. We have to do it and create those conversations, and meet people in their workplaces, and in their churches, and do it on a timeline that works for parents, versus the traditional meeting where we might serve food, ask parents to stick around for an hour or two afterwards, and do the typical facilitated meeting. The reason I would encourage all of you to read the book is I think it'll stretch your thinking, it will surprise you. He intersperses throughout this book quotes that are somewhat critical of how public education operates today. And he does it very strategically throughout the book. In fact, you read the quote and you go, yes, I've heard that, you know what, there's a certain segment of our community, of the country, that feels this way about public education. And then he tells you where the quote came from, and just as often as you hear it today, it was exactly the same kind of criticism that was there in the 1950s and 1960s, when back in the '50s going into the decade of the '60s, it was really an elite student population that went to college. Then some of the very same quotes, which I think apply to today, were there at the turn of the century, from the 19th to the 20th century, and some of them were even back in the 1800s. So it's a very, the first two-thirds is a very entertaining read, I think you'll enjoy it, but I think it will help us as a Board redefine what you want the goals of the district to be, especially those goals that might have to do with communication and how we reach out and work with a group like MyTechPlus, or an interested group that, whose primary interests might be in those youngsters that learn easiest and fastest, who sometimes get called our brightest kids, although we know all kids can learn if you give them enough time, or a group that sees the strength of our curriculum being the college prep-only curriculum, or a group that would like to have kids better prepared for the kind of skill set if they want to enter the workforce within a couple of years out of high school. There's an opportunity to follow a model here that allows us to embrace that conversation in the community. In recent months, I found myself meeting more with individual groups who advocate for what they'd like the district to do. This is a way to pull all those groups together, and I'd just be curious to have you read the book, and then we can follow up with some facilitated discussion of that, if you would. There's your reading assignment, your school assignment for the summer.
Did you just join a book club?
We did.
We just got homework.
And given the temperatures outside, it'd probably be a good thing to do in a well air-conditioned area, so, anything else, Mr. Ellinger?
That would be it. We have an obligation for those of you that can make it after the Board meeting, so you're certainly welcome to join us for that, a little bit of a co-cow.
Thank you. And to Mr. DeBoer, again, congratulations, and to those from the staff that are here today. I mean, it's Monday in the middle of July, and thank you for being here. So with that, if we have nothing else from any other Board member, we will stand adjourned at 4:33.